We have a quorum. Let's start our meeting. Of the panel on security, we have two agenda items today, the first. Law and order situation of Hong Kong in twenty twenty two and the second one redevelopment of Hong Kong Correctional Services Academy multi purpose gymnasium. At forty seven Tong Tao Wan Road Stanley for item one law and order situation of Hong Kong in twenty twenty two. With us here today, Mister Raymond Siew, Commissioner of Police. Attending Director of Crime and Security, Miss Chong Reng Man and Senior Superintendent of Crime Wing Headquarters, Miss Tammy Chen. We will invite the Commissioner to give us a brief report. In our last meeting, our members were concerned about telephone scams and triad related crimes. In your report, please let us know more about these two aspects. Since the Commissioner has to leave by four, so this item should be wrapped up by four P M. So. There will not be a second round. If you wish to speak, please press the button. Commissioner, please give us a brief report. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. Now. I will give you a brief report on Hong Kong's law and order situation in twenty twenty two. And issues related to the national security law. I will then answer your questions and give a brief summary. In twenty twenty two, there are seventy thousand and forty eight cases. Compared with twenty twenty one, there is an increase of five thousand six hundred and twenty cases. Because there are some eight thousand cases increased in deception cases. For violent cases, there were eight thousand eight hundred and thirty, a drop of seven hundred and fifty seven cases. Detection rate was thirty five point two percent. Many major crimes recorded a decrease. For robbery and burglary, they are at the lowest number since nineteen sixty nine. For wounding arson. Uh snatching. Uh the numbers were at a low since the handover. First homicide cases, there were a total of thirty cases, a rise of seven cases. Fifteen of them involved domestic or family violence. All of them have been detected. For detection cases. There are twenty thousand, seven, twenty seven thousand nine hundred and twenty three. There are a rise of forty five percent. Seventy percent of them involve internet scams. The amount concerned. Is four point eight billion. The increase mainly uh. Consists of online shopping scams, employment fraud, investment front telephone deception, an increase of forty percent and one hundred and eighty percent. And for anti deception coordination center. Has successfully intercepted eight hundred and eighty eight cases with over one point three billion of payments regarding telephone scams. In September last year, we had actively communicated with the Hong Kong Office of Communications. And teleservice providers and put a series of measures in place. We stopped the use of telephone numbers starting with plus eight five two. And we have filtered and intercepted hyperlinks leading to fraudulent websites. And for mobile numbers uh involved in deception, we suspend their services. And last year, we have rolled out a database called Scan Meter. So that uh members of the public can distinguish. Um fraudulent details, there were over two hundred thousand searches and reduced fifteen percent of. Fifty percent of cases, some of them have been identified as related to deception. And preventing the loss of some one point three billion dollars. And. Tomorrow, we will be launching a mobile application of Scan Meter called Scan Meter Plus. We hope to further enhance the public's awareness in this matter. Then I would like to talk about blackmail cases. There were one thousand, some one thousand cases, an increase of fifteen percent. Seventy seven percent were naked chat. There were a rise of two hundred and forty three cases. And students were the majority of the victims, sixty percent of the victims are age thirty or below. We have stepped up publicity effort in November in radio program. We have. Uh give our public announcement regarding naked chat in the hope of raising public awareness. As for triad related theft, uh uh crime. There was an increase of six hundred and sixty six cases. Many of them are related to deception. Because there has been an increase of five hundred and fourteen cases for serious uh violent cases. Twelve cases. Crimes related to prostitution has also seen an increase. We have adopted an intelligence led approach to fight against the uh triad related crimes. Last year for violent crimes related to triad, we have immediately stepped up coordination with law enforcement agencies in the mainland. Including large scale anti triad operations and during the World Cup. We have conducted anti gambling efforts arresting over one thousand persons. And we have noticed that the triad has taken control of prostitution rings. And deception, we have detected over three hundred cases within the rest of two hundred person. As for burglary cases, there has been a uh continuous decrease. The number was uh seventy seven, detection rate was seventy four percent. This is the second highest detection rate in the past forty six years. As for burglary cases, there was eight hundred and eighty six cases. We have detected three hundred and seventy seven cases arresting three hundred and forty five persons, detection rate was forty three percent. This is also the highest detection rate in the past forty six years. As for sex crimes. We have fifty three cases of rape, a decrease of thirty six cases. We have detected all of them. And for indecent assault, a total of nine hundred and fifty three cases, we recorded a drop of sixty five cases. The detection rate was eighty one percent. We will keep a close eye on the crime trend. And conduct publicity effort accordingly. As for serious drug drug offenses, there were one thousand four hundred cases, a decrease of one hundred and thirty four cases. Even though there were fewer number of cases, we have seized more amount of drugs. It is because we have adopted an intelligence led approach. And intercepted the drugs at the source. We have seized four hundred and eighty five K G of ice, four hundred and twenty four kilograms of cocaine. Worth three hundred and seventy million dollars and a record breaking seizure of nine hundred and five K G of cannabis buds. Uh worth one point, one point nine million dollars. We have organized large scale anti drugs campaign. And the second edition of a anti drug leadership program. For youth related crimes, there were two thousand seven hundred and seventy four persons arrested. Uh the number of students arrested showed a decrease of eleven percent. As for serious drugs offenses, criminal damage, et cetera, there were a decrease. For robbery, eighty percent decrease, serious drugs offense, forty degrees criminal damage, uh seventeen percent. This shows that in the past year, the police has worked well with stakeholders, including schools and parents. So the students have an increased level of awareness. However, we have noticed that in relation to triad related deception, wounding and serious assault, the number of youths involved has increased. Perhaps because of negative influence or the temptation of making fast money. They have joined illegal activities, including providing bank accounts for receiving uh deception related money. Or committing child related offenses. Although students arrested for serious drug offenses showed a forty percent decrease, but for. Young person age thirteen to fifteen, they have been used for drugs trafficking. We think that um we can't tolerate any of these cases and we need to. Cooperate with the community to safeguard the interests of our young people. Next, I would like to talk about the implementation of the national security law. A total of two hundred and thirty persons were arrested, sixty percent of them were prosecuted. Chair, that's all from me for now. I welcome questions and then I will give you a brief summary later. Thank you. Now we have nine members wishing to speak. I will tell you the first five, Mister Benson, look, Doctor Johnny, Mister Frankie Yeg, Mister Li Tong Kwok and Mister Edmund Wong. Mister Benson Look, four minutes question and answer. Mister Look, please. Thank you. If we look at the overall crime numbers in twenty twenty two and compared with twenty twenty one. We have an increase of some five thousand cases that is quite worrying. But luckily for youth crime, when we look at the number, the situation seems to be improving. Well, just then, Chair, you have mentioned many of our colleagues are concerned about deception cases. There is an increase of eight thousand six hundred and twenty four cases. Bringing the total number about twenty eight thousand cases. This seems to be the worst category of crimes. I'm sure that the police have worked hard, especially with the A D C C intercepted some one point three billion of dollars. I'm sure that among these crimes, online romance scams is the worst of them. Today is Valentine's Day. I'm not sure how many victims will there be. If we look at this M O, there are many elements. It is easy to. Uh commit such a crime compared to robbery or burglary. It is much more cost effective for criminals. For this kind of crimes. Many of them have identified their victims through online dating app. Many of the victims are female. And many of them are professionals as well. Uh the amount of money is some a few hundred thousand dollars, et cetera. They know how to um appeal to the psychology of victims. They even pretend to be foreign royalties. So the victims will fall into their traps. It is similar to playing a bear claw machines. The victims will keep on pu- putting in coins. So I would like to ask the administration first regarding online romance scam. What is the detection rate? And what are the measures in place to fight against this type of crime? Second. Any specific publicity effort regarding online romance scam? I have noticed that there are many outdoor advertisements from the police lately. Uh let's say offbeat one hundred and twenty seconds, et cetera. But the number of deception cases is on the rise, so that means that the publicity hasn't reached them. Uh some of the local popular dating apps, perhaps you can. Place advertisements there or do you have any other better measures? Commissioner, thank you for your questions. Well, Happy Valentine's Day. Regarding online romance scam. There were one thousand five hundred and thirty three cases compared to last year. There is a decrease of one hundred and twenty six cases. Over eighty percent of the victims are female. In these online romance scam. Like you said. Frosters look for their targets on online dating sites. Usually they. Uh strike up a conversation and build a relationship with their victims. And then they will use various excuses to scam their victims for money. But many of them have never met the frosters or the victims in person. Because of all the sweet talk, they have gained the victim's trust. In these cases, after they have established a rapport with the victims, they would introduce certain investment options. To their victims. At the beginning, the victim may put in some ten thousand dollars and then they would see. A profit. They would provide a. Uh an initial profit, so the victims believe that they were able to make money. As for prevention of crime, like any deception cases, we need to put in more efforts in publicity. Let's say for online romance scam. Usually. Victims only realized. That they have fallen prey after a few months. By then it would be too late. When they report the case. It would be too late already. That's why publicity is important.
Just now you mentioned, and in fact, uh through different media channels, we have. Even uh put on advertisements before a movie is screened in the theater to publicize our message. And then inside um the government tunnels, we have also planted certain uh A P I's. So what is important is to let them be more aware. One other point that is very important is that. I surely believe that. You understand what we have been talking about, that is the mode of operation. But then it's important for you to let those around you to get the same message as well. In the case of romance scams. We know that even at the time of making a report to the police, they are still sort of uh. Uh not fully aware of the problem. They are still sort of uh deep in the um. Emotions. I have yet to answer the question about the detection rate. I'm sure uh there will be similar questions. I think maybe members can keep your questions succinct, so better leave more time for the police to give an answer to us. Doctor Um, in the year twenty twenty two, the overall crime rate has gone up by eight point seven percent. Detection rate was thirty five point two percent. A decrease of three point three percent when compared with the year before. And then for deception. Twenty eight thousand cases, an increase of eight thousand, an increase of a drastic rate of forty five point one percent. So has the administration analyzed the reason for the drastic increase of the figures? And what is your finding? The second question is for online shopping fraud. Employment fraud, investment fraud, et cetera. I would like to know about the amount of money involved. And what is the largest sum uh involved in a case? And please also give us the details of the cases. Despite the massive publicities carried out, as mentioned by the C P, to educate the public. Why is it that the number of cases is still rising? Do you have any new initiatives? Are you going to deploy new methods to tackle the crime? Thank you. Thank you, Doctor Um, for your questions. First of all, let me comment on the detection rate. Yes, it is relatively on the low side. This is mainly because deception cases account for forty percent of the overall crime. And for deception cases, the detection rate, and I would like to answer Mister Look's question as well. Uh for deception, detection rate is only twelve percent only, so it is dragging down the overall detection rate across the board. Just now you talked about um they need to know about the sums of money involved for different kinds of deception. First of all, online shopping. Yes, it accounts for um eight thousand seven hundred cases, uh amongst lots, seven to four million dollars. Uh the highest amount, four point nine million in a case. Um it involved the purchase of medical or surgical marks. And then for employment fraud, uh four hundred and eighty million dollars, an increase of four times or more. For employment deception, usually is about sort of breaking down the bills. And then for investment deception, lost one point eight billion. Uh when compared with the year before, a downward trend of forty five percent. Telephone deception, loss of over one billion dollars, an increase of thirty three percent. So for different kinds of deception cases, as the two honorable members have said, we did carry out a lot of publicity. What we have found out is that despite the massive publicity. I think unfortunately, every day you receive tons of messages. Have you really read them carefully? I think that's the cross of the matter. Because we have been publicizing the modus operandi of the different kinds of deception. The cross of the matter is if you don't read the details and when you receive a call from a scammer. You may not know that it is a code that will lead to your uh losses. So the cross of the matter is that we need to reach out to the citizens, make sure that they listen to our messages. So as you have said, uh as you have been told, um when you drive through seventeen government tunnels. Uh you will be sort of compelled uh to uh listen, uh hear our A P I's concerning deception. And then before you watch a movie, when you go to the cinema, I'm sure you have the experience that you will watch A P I's against deception. So we are sort of forcing it on you so that you won't have the choice to not seeing them. So we need to make sure that we also alert those around us as well. Mister Frankie Yeg. Thank you, Chair. Question for the C P. How should I understand your figures? For the overall crime rate, it has gone up. But then other than uh paragraph fourteen and paragraph eighteen concerning deception and. Technology crime, I think across the board, it has been a decrease drastically, thirty three point four percent. So probably in future, you need to focus on deception cases, but then there are mainly about financial losses. We're not talking about loss of lives and limbs, and so that would put our mind at ease. For the implanted advertisements, um well, in fact. At night or in the evening, we have a lot of sort of um radio po- sorry. Uh while we're driving through, our tunnels will be listening to radio programs, but then all out of a sudden, uh just interrupted and then we hear an A P I. But still, it may not be reaching out to everybody. You need to make sure that it is comprehensive or extensive. And then a word about uh youth crime. Uh some of them are involved in drug cases, but it is good to see that there has been a decrease across the board as far as youth crime is concerned. But then in the past, we used to see a large number of vehicles, they have gone missing. They have been dismantled, broken down for uh export of spare parts to the mainland. How come that in the last year, uh there were so many missing vehicles? Is it a matter of mischief or uh was it the case that um the car was sort of broken down into spare parts for sale? C P, yes, about the crime rate. Just for deception cases, we saw an increase of eight thousand cases of more. You also mentioned technology crime. Most of the technology crimes is um deception cases like online investment or online shopping. So there is an overlapping. For other types of crime, as you have said and as I've mentioned in the beginning, most of the crime types have seen a decrease in the numbers. Some of them are rather significant, including youth crime. For juveniles and young people, uh well, last year, in fact, we cooperated with stakeholders like schools or parent teacher associations. There was a lot of cooperation. We stepped up our publicity at schools. And we are glad to see that for most cases involving students, in particular serious drug cases. Probably you recall that last year we were very concerned, many school students were abused in the sense that. They were made use of to become the prize for uh become the 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 assistance for drug traffickers. This year, we're glad to see that there has been a significant decrease. You mentioned about the number of missing vehicles. Indeed, there was an increase of forty three percent when compared with the year before. We did look at the uh classes of vehicles lost and where they were lost. We found that in the majority of the cases, uh those were vehicles left in the street. And as a result, um private vehicles, motorcycles uh were lost. Um the largest number was um private cars followed by motorcycles. Um they were found later on, uh seventy percent recovered. In most cases, they were used um to commit crime and then they were abandoned. Or they were sort of um a matter of taking convenience without authority or they were broken down for the spare parts. So and then in other cases, it's a technical case or a a case of missing vehicle in the technical sense. There is somebody uh took another person's car away without getting permission. And we arrested ten persons and we cracked down upon uh three syndicates and detecting eighteen cases. Mister Li, I agree with what Mister Yeg has said in relation to his observation. I agree that the police have been trying to find different ways to tackle the problem. But still, despite your uh your various initiatives, there are still so many people falling prey to deception. Have you set up a task force so as to find out about the common characteristics of the deception cases? So as to find out about the most vulnerable target group, so that you target your publicity at them and then develop specific measures. Now you've done a lot of publicity, but then it targets at the society as a whole. Can you not be more specific? And then during the Lunar New Year. Um we saw that the box officers uh have measured um have uh come up with. A lot of um record breaking films. So can we not ask the um T V stations to develop. A drama series or a movie uh that can bring out the message of fighting against crime, fighting against deception. Uh because movies are very popular with the public. And then for the technology crime, the C B told us that there is an overlapping between technology crime and deception. But then there are so many of them. I just wonder, have you got adequate manpower? Uh do you have adequate training or do you need more resources to deal with this emerging uh crime trend? Thank you, Mister Li, for your questions. First of all, let me talk about the following point. Indeed, we agreed with you that for the past two years, we have had a lot of publicity with measures of different channels. Uh social media, radio, television, movies, uh we've been uh. We have been uh making use of placement marketing as well. Well, I think many people are aware of such A P I's. But at the same time, the victims told us that admitted that they didn't take the message very seriously. Well, usually we've been explaining to the public about the mode of operation. That's why I've been emphasizing that after we have received the message, we should help others by alerting them. In particular, for the elderly citizens, they may not uh be patient enough to understand the message clearly. Well, um we have asked television stations and in fact a producer um has promised. To make a movie concerning deception. We have got an agreement uh with the um movie um company. For the. Um T V stations, we have been repeating their messages under offbeat hundred and twenty seconds. So that you you won't miss it. And then for vulnerable groups, ye- yes, again. And then for vulnerable groups, ye- yes, again, we have been targeting at specific vulnerable groups. Like in the case of mainland students, they are really vulnerable. This is one of the examples. Uh we are trying to find different ways to try to help them so that we can sort of give them a briefing to warn them against the traps. Well, probably it's now you thought that um in different sectors, um they have fallen victim to deception. So probably they have overlooked our messages. Uh we just wonder if we can sort of relaying the messages uh to the specific uh targets. So this is uh one of the ways that we are trying to explore.
Next, Mister Edmund Wong. President, I have similar questions with other members. They are related to deception, such a significant amount of money is involved. I understand that the police force has done a variety of measures, but very often victims did not receive these messages. One of the methods mentioned was through television or movie. Another channel is perhaps through primary school or kindergarten. For family members, parents, grandparents, when they do homework with their children, perhaps they can receive these messages more effectively. Victims come from all walks of life. I have read from the newspaper that a victim who is from the accounting sector has lost uh two hundred and seventy million dollars. So I would like to know, did uh the did Frosters utilize local bank accounts when receiving these payment? If the amount was transferred to the mainland or overseas, I understand that there is a mechanism to stop that payment. But if local bank accounts are used, is there any penalty in place for the relevant banks? I agree with you that the issue here is whether or not the publicity messages are getting through. Currently, there is education in primary schools. Uh our mascot is the little grape. For students of kindergartens or primary schools, I'm sure they are aware of this mascot. Because we are doing a lot of our publicity work there. And we have a cartoon or animation in place using the little grape and other police mascots. We want to step up publicity efforts for children in anti-deception efforts. It is my understanding that the show is broadcast on TVB. Actually, we do need the help of banks. They are an important stakeholder. In the past few years, we have done a lot with them. In twenty twenty-two, we have stopped a total of two hundred and thirty cases of deception. We have an award ceremony to commend bank staff members who successfully prevented these deception cases. Let's say they see a client trying to transfer a large amount of money to a suspicious account. They will notify us immediately. And we have collaborated with the Hong Kong Monetary Authority, fifteen banks in Hong Kong, the ICAC, the CNE Department. We have an intelligence group against money laundering. So we have measures in place to fight against money laundering. And together with Singapore and other neighboring countries, we had shared our experience. It is my understanding that in Singapore, they have a new practice there that a bank staff member stations in the anti-deception group. So for money wired to Frosters accounts, we'll be able to learn about that quickly. It will be notified as soon as possible so that we can start the stop payment mechanism. Thank you. Next, Doctor Tan Yeh-Hang.
Let's do a third paragraph. Mister Doctor Tang, please as we come. For the uh third paragraph, the overall detection rate was thirty-five point two percent. Uh when compared with twenty twenty-one, a decrease of three point three percent. I can understand that this detection rate uh is overall. I think just I just wonder if you can sort of uh give us the average figure for say three years or five years. The detection rates would vary. Uh in one year, it may come down. In another year, it may go up. So perhaps you should cover a certain period of time and have the average figure. And then we can better understand the trend of the detection rate. This is the first point. The second point is that we have got so many deception cases. A lot of them are deploying modern methods, technology-related. It won't be uh carried out by a single person or a small group of people. Most of them are sort of syndicates. Uh so for the police, I just wondered that for this uh sort of deception cases, perhaps you 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 can sort of tell us more about its relationship with organized crime? And do you have any sort of coordination uh internally within the police force when it comes to the fighting of such kind of crimes? CP.
On deception cases, we believe that there are deception syndicates and that they are systematic. And we have dismantled some of these syndicates. But very often, these syndicates operate outside Hong Kong. So the deception, uh the detection rate is relatively lower. But we have been in touch with LEAs of other jurisdictions and we have conducted joint operations and dismantled deception syndicates successfully. But this is not easy. Very often, when victims reported their crimes, months have passed already. So in the process of evidence collection, et cetera, the difficulty has increased. So the detection rate. Every year, we look at the overall detection rate. Of course, if we look at the figures by breakdown, let's say robbery or burglary, the detection rate was the highest in the past forty-six years. But the overall detection rate has gone down by three point three percent. It is mainly because of the relatively low detection rate of deception cases. Thank you. Mister Yu Padlam. I'm also very concerned about the increase of deception cases, an increase of forty-five percent, some eight thousand cases. So it not only increased the number of overall cases, it has also lowered the overall detection rate. So the figures are not pretty. Luckily, for other crimes, there are a decreasing trend, so we can see your efforts there. For deception cases, in the fourth quarter of last year, when overseas travel started to resume, I have heard from many travel agents that there were some travel agents impostors selling travel products on social media. It is uh they have reported it to the police. And I would like to know how many cases have you received? And did you manage to arrest anyone other than filing charges based on the latest travel industry ordinance? Is it possible to charge them with um posing as a travel agent without a license? Thank you for your question. For Frosters posing as travel agents, I understand that these cases appear from time to time. I hope that you can report it to the police as soon as possible so we can bring them to justice. For these kind of online shopping frauds, I've heard some of them as well. So they will be handed over to our crime teams. And together with social media platforms or internet service providers, we may ask them to remove such websites. But figures relating to uh travel scams, I'm sorry, I don't have the figures on hand. Perhaps after the meeting, I can let you know the actual numbers. Any follow-up, Mister Yu? Well, for travelers coming into Hong Kong, the number is going up. So other than promoting anti-deception messages to our residents, perhaps you can include tourists in your target audience as well. I hope that the police can step up their efforts. This is a vicious cycle. Because of the low detection rate, it may encourage criminals to uh continue with their crimes. Thank you for your suggestion. Next, Mister Robert Lee. Well, I'm not a member of this panel, but I'm very concerned about the topic of discussion today, especially regarding deception cases. So I would like to give my views here and raise some questions. In the numbers provided, I can see that deception cases account for forty percent of overall crime. You have done a lot targeting investment fraud, telephone deception or online scams, et cetera. But to be able to solve this issue, is it possible for you to have any cross-bureau coordination? Well, for certain professional sectors like me from the financial services sector, scammers have been posing as licensed professionals or organizations. Just then you talk about cooperating with the banking sector. I'm sure that uh industries or sectors will be happy to help in dissemination of information. So what kind of communication are you having with them? For RAM and DUM schemes, it involves the securities, the SFC. The problem is getting serious. So we need to have cross-bureau, cross-sector collaboration. I would like to know, do you have any such collaboration in place? And are you in contact with social media platforms? With false information on these platforms? Did you contact them and ask them to delete or handle such information? Thank you.
CP, thank you, Mister Lee, for your questions. I agree with you entirely that not only should we rely on the police to tackle crime, it takes uh different bureaus, different sectors to cooperate when we have been adopting such an approach. However, when it comes to interdisciplinary cooperation, many sectors, regulatory bodies and stakeholders have been cooperating with us, and this is indeed very important. I think you are aware of the fact that every person has a mobile phone. A mobile phone uh is also the device for us to pass on our messages. But again, it is also a device that the scammers can rely upon to um pursue their targets. So we have had a task force set up together with a few um mobile service operators. We have been holding regular meetings. We'll try to see how we can prevent deception. So far, five meetings have been held, it's on a monthly basis. And um we have also got um working groups under that mechanism um to track out the details. And then have we have include anti-deception messages and the licensing conditions. That's the job for the Communications Authority. Now, um for the bogus uh calls with a plus equal five two number has been stopped. We have already interrupted one hundred thousand such calls. And then hyperlinks to the um scam sites have also been sort of uh stopped. Sometimes uh uh we often have the this happening, that is, personal details being stolen when you click on a hyperlink. And then certain mobile um telephone numbers uh that are suspected of uh being involved in deception have been suspended. There are also other new initiatives being studied. What we hope to do is that we hope we can sort of um um have effective measures. And for telephone deception cases, uh the number peaked last November and has come down to hundred and forty-nine in the January. So it appears to work, but of course, there's room for improvement. We are also trying to develop new initiatives. Next, Mister Dominic Lee. We are worried about the increasing number of deception. A lot of them are in uh uh online in nature. And then uh they work through social media, um mobile apps or communication applications. In overseas countries, they will rely on AI to detect the messages. In the past, they have been using this skill to look out for terrorist acts. I just wonder if we can make use of the same technology. Of course, we have to work through the police or the security bureau. Um I think they have got an office in Hong Kong. Can we not ask them to let us use the same technology to fight deception? And then publicity is of course important. The Security Bureau and the police have had extensive publicity. But I'm afraid they're too general in nature. It is said that um there are different sectors um that have become vulnerable owing to one reason or other. Can we not appeal to their peers to help us out? Um KOLs, social media would be wonderful in helping us out. I just wonder if the police or the Security Bureau can establish a I just wonder if the police or the security bureau can establish a fund. I think in the past, you used to sponsor local organizations or other groups to carry out anti-deception publicity for their own members. CP, thank you, Mister Lee, for your question. Liaising with the social media. In fact, we have had liaison with uh different social media uh operators. And we have also made use, made use of their platforms to send out the message as to whether more could have been done. Certainly, I agree that the social media will be an important platform to help us in publicity. Being more specific in our targets, yes, as I have said, this is indeed the case. Let me cite an example. For the accounting profession or for the teaching profession, probably um they can uh have peer assistance in relation to publicity. Earlier on, I have liaised with uh certain um uh chambers of commerce or sort of associations to help us out in sending out the message. Um asking KOLs to help. In fact, last year, there was a um territory-wide uh anti-deception quiz uh or test. Uh, we have, we put up banners all over the city. You have got a QR code, and then people have been asked to scan the QR code. And then they will get tickets for a theme park. So it was a test case. On that occasion, hundreds of thousands of people tried to to uh scan the QR code. What they get in return is to view four clips each lasting for a minute or so. They are all themed around uh deception prevention. And at that time, we asked, we invited four KOLs to appear in the clips. And they also have played their clips on their own uh YouTube channels. And as a result, we have sort of cracked up three million views. Uh, so I think it would help, but then Mister Lee's advice is certainly good. That is, we need to do more and we have to repeat it all the time so that we can be uh sort of going all out uh to publicize the message and then we can um uh get results. Mister Gary Zhang. There were twenty-five hundred fifty-four cases related to triad societies. The figures have fluctuated, but I don't see any uh decreasing trend. But then for serious crime, as a result of the involvement of tribe members, the number of serious crime will go, will remain at a high level. Um, we have seen triad members um chopping other members or they are trying to uh sort of um um uh establish a high-level uh presence. Um, I'm from the uh Antinorm constituency. I'm quite ashamed of that. In the year twenty eighteen, with the direct um sort of um uh advice of President C, there was a nationwide campaign against triad societies. What is important is to be systematic and we have to crack down the triad influence as source. Uh, with a number of years of hard work on the mainland, if you still have people claiming themselves to be a tribe member, then you would say that uh this is a fool. In Hong Kong, uh we have still got people claiming themselves to be a tribe member to um threaten others or to blackmail others for money. I have been advised by my assistant um to think twice before I embark on this question. So CP, we need to follow up on the uh cases themselves. But then, as Mister President C has said, we need to tackle the problem at root. So could you share your views with us, CP? Thank you, Mister Zhang, for your uh questions. When it comes to triad-related crime, I just want to say that cracking down on syndicates, organized crime, and the triads, this is part of my uh priority areas as the CP. And this is always uh intelligence, intelligence-based. I can fully understand that in the second half of last year, there were indeed more eye-catching uh wounding cases. For wounding cases and serious assault cases, let me say that there were twelve more such cases last year when compared with the year before. Uh, but then for crime of such a nature, it is a case too many. As I have said, when I started my speech, we had a territory-wide anti-riot campaign. Would like to uh stop their illegal acts. And we try to seize and confiscate their illegal gains uh so that we can uh sort of um strike them where it hurts. Between the eleventh and the eighteenth of November last year, there was a major campaign lasting for eight days. Nine hundred people were arrested, and some of them were the masterminds of triad societies. For operations of such a nature will be continued to make sure that this kind of crime will subsist. For triad-related cases, let me talk about the detection rate. It is ninety-two percent. But it doesn't mean that we have a high detection rate and so we don't have to take it seriously. In fact, I have asked all my colleagues to beef up their efforts. In particular, for those in the crime brewing, they should uh enhance their intelligence gathering work as well as their um detective work. Mister Duncan Chu, thank you for letting me ask the questions, even though I'm a non-panel member. Let me talk about technology crime. We have seen an increase of forty percent. So for technology crime, what is the detection rate? Is it also on the low side? You talk about twelve percent. Is it for online scamming or uh deception? So please give me the detection rate for technology crime. Mister Lyton Cork asked about your manpower level. I think deception will only increase rather than decrease. So what is your manpower level for dealing with technology crime? Do you still have a shortfall? I know that you have recruitment difficulties. And for cybersecurity, our sector knows that it is always difficult to recruit enough people of the right caliber. So do you have recruitment problems? And then for investment deception cases, I am aware of the details. Currently, what happens is that people will report the matter to the police and then the police will ask the relevant platform to take down the advertisement. But it won't stop it because they can um have another identity, they can uh run in the name of another company, and this would only continue. I think the platforms should say no to similar advertisements. But then platforms um won't sort of uh stop receiving such advertisements um because we don't have a piece of legislation against it. So don't you think that it's right time to have a uh piece of legislation mainly on about cybersecurity so as to deal with the problem? Thank you, Mister Chu, for your questions. For technology crime, as I have said, most of the technology crime offenses are also deception cases. Last year, there were twenty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-seven cases for online deception. There were nineteen thousand five hundred ninety-nine, including online shopping, online employment, fraud, online investment, deception, et cetera. In other words, uh the detection rate for technology crime, uh it is nine point nine percent only, not even ten percent. For manpower, well, probably you have noticed, and I've also mentioned that for our police force, we do have a recruitment challenge. This is a fact. But then this is not unique to the police. I think there is manpower shortage for all occupations and professions. The labor force is dwindling, and there are also other reasons, other factors. So for anti-crime and anti-deception efforts will be affected by manpower shortage? Well, today, of course, we can't just rely on manpower. We need to count on technology to help us to improve the efficiency of our work. And then uh for um unnecessary work, we should also sort of uh um uh avoid that, and we are uh thinking of different ways and new ways to make sure that we do a better job. For platforms, of course, they have a duty to help. Uh, we have been talking to the um platforms of on this matter. Well, when we see that a certain platform uh has got bogus advertisements, then we will liaise with them immediately and we ask them to take down the related advertisements. But as to whether more could have been done, I and whether they could help us in a more effective way, we'll certainly talk to them again.
Miss Elizabeth Quat, for the increase of deception cases, the number is astonishing. An increase of eight thousand six hundred cases, a total of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred cases. People around me have told me that they have received a lot of these fraudulent calls uh or text messages, et cetera. Many members of the public may fall victim to these scams. And the commissioner has told us a lot of measures to tackle these crimes. Firstly, as mentioned by Mister Duncan Chu, perhaps we should consider cybersecurity legislation. Right now, AI's development is going rather rapidly. So perhaps criminals will utilize AI to commit their crimes. The police should consider incorporating using AI in detection. For counterterrorism measures, there was a anti-terrorism hotline. The results were quite good. So is it possible to utilize the same technique in anti-deception work? The banking sector is the gatekeeper. Are there other things that we can do? Let's say if we see people uh transferring money out constantly, perhaps they can report it. Another issue of concern is triad-related crimes. Some twenty-five hundred cases, an increase of six hundred cases. That is quite a lot. Well, many members of the public believe that um for Form Eight holders, bogus refugees, the problem remains unsolved. Many of them are involved in serious crimes. Well, people have told me that they have formed their own syndicates. Do you have any numbers on hand regarding these uh Form Eight holders? And do you have any crimes and how do you plan to tackle them? Well, there were a few questions there. Firstly, regarding bogus refugees, for non-Chinese persons, that is, Form Eight holders, there were six hundred and eighty-seven. Compared to twenty-twenty-one, there is a decrease of two hundred and forty-two. The number of offenses that they have committed, whether a number of persons arrested account for two point four percent of the overall number of arrested persons, a decrease of one point four percent. Their offenses are mainly shop theft, miscellaneous theft, and serious drug offense. In the past year, there were nine cases related to triad. So for offenses involving these Form Eight holders, we have been working with the immigration department and the customs and exercise department. We have utilized an an intelligence-led approach and cross-department collaboration to crack down on these uh non-ethnic Chinese offenders. As for efforts from the banking center, we have worked closely with them. They have been very helpful, but can they do more? Like I said, in Singapore, they have adopted a new practice where a bank staff member stations at the anti-deception command center. Well, we also have the anti-deception coordination center. We have been in touch with the HKMA. And they will have discussion with banks to see that for bank accounts perhaps involved with criminal activities, for any deposit made, perhaps we can be notified as soon as possible to prevent the sum falling into the hands of criminals. Next, Reverend Peter Kun. I would like to follow up on NEC offenders. Well, lately, for some serious cases, some NEC offenders were involved. I wonder if they are HKID cardholders. Are there any ways to solve this problem? And others have mentioned technology crime. Well, I have received requests for help. Some people realize that they have become victims of frauds. But they were notified by banks that after the transfer was made, there was nothing that they can do. Well, after they have reported the case, is it possible to withhold the sum of money? Well, the victim may have wired the money, but after discussion with family members and friends, they realize that what they realize what they have done and perhaps they would try to stop the payment. Is there anything we can do there? Well, for non-ethnic Chinese offenders, for uh non-refoulement claimants, other than enforcement actions, but for Form Eight holders who commits crime in Hong Kong, their sentence will be increased. In twenty-twenty-one, the immigration ordinance was amended, which came into effect on the first of August, twenty-twenty-one. It authorizes the immigration department to streamline the process in terms of reference of the relevant tribunal to enhance enforcement actions on these claimants and also their repatriation. And the maximum penalty has increased. For non-ethnic Chinese who enter Hong Kong illegally, they cannot commit crimes in Hong Kong. As for banks refusing to cooperate, well, like I said, we have been in liaison with banks. We have established a anti-deception working group, so we are in close contact with them. Once a report has been made and that sums have been transferred to various bank accounts, we get in touch with banks immediately and usually they are very helpful and they will start the stop payment mechanism. If we can intercept the payment, we would do so as soon as possible. Last year, we provided training for bank staff members. And in twenty twenty two, they have helped us prevented two hundred and thirty cases of deception. Well, just then regarding non-ethnic Chinese committers, uh offenders. Were there any Hong Kong I D holders? Just a moment. For those who are not Form Eight holders. For non-ethnic Chinese residents involved in crimes. In twenty twenty two, number of arrested persons were two thousand and twenty six compared with twenty twenty one and decrease of one hundred and eighty one persons. They are mainly involved in three types of crimes, miscellaneous theft, shop theft and deception. As for triad-related crimes, in twenty twenty two, eighty five persons. Compared with the previous year, an increase of fifteen persons. Thank you. Next, Doctor Chow Man Kong. Commissioner, well, there were two numbers, which I'm sure is quite troubling. For deception, an increase of forty five percent. If we compare the figure to twenty eighteen, there is a two hundred and thirty percent increase. So is there anything more the police can do in this regard? I can see that you have put in a lot of efforts and last year you have intercepted eight hundred and eighty eight cases. But that only account for three point two percent of the total number of deception cases. So I think there are two areas where we can do more. First, to uh publicity. Second, international collaboration. Third, development of new technology. On the first point, publicity, raising the awareness of the public. Perhaps the elderly or housewives are easier targets. So can we perhaps play T V dramas relating to the matter during prime time T V? Second, international collaboration. In the mainland, perhaps you have seen it on the news. Uh long-distance calls were disabled. Of course, we won't do this in Hong Kong, but are there any other ways that we can. Approach this. Third, the use of technology. Just that Mister Duncan Chu talked about, uh Google advertisements. Is there anything that we can do? You are part of. Uh you are part of a scam, actually. Is there any way that we can do? Can we amend legislation? I'm sure that we are all willing to help. In the prevention of crime. Also on manpower. Well, understand that there is a shortfall of some five to six thousand. Four days ago. The commissioner has said that for every one hundred inspectorate candidate, only four were admitted. And for police constables, only eleven out of one hundred. Well, there are only forty three thousand D S E candidates. So if they all apply. And if you accept them all, that is not even enough. So how are we going to fill the vacancy? In the future, I hope that. We can come up with better solutions in terms of manpower and resource allocation. Also. On illegal parking tickets. Are there any numbers comparing last year and twenty twenty one? It is my understanding that more tickets have been issued. Uh and some professional drivers have complained about that. But of course. If they are parking illegally, then of course they should be fined. But is it possible for us to give professional drivers some leeway?
Time is running out, so so please pick out those that have not been asked for uh traffic offenses. And compared with the year before, as far as illegal parking uh is is involved. Indeed, there were fifty eight thousand more such cases. As to whether we have been more effective in booking the vehicles. This is indeed the case because we have relied on electronic means and it has made our work more efficient. But then I think you would agree with me, that is, space is limited and yet vehicles are numerous. And therefore, um illegal parking activities have been sort of getting more and more prevalent. And we have received an increasing number of complaints. Upon receiving complaints, we have to take action. And our main duty is to ensure that traffic is smooth. So when it comes to our operation and taking action. Uh whenever discretion can be exercised, we will consider that. Otherwise, we have to enforce the law. As to manpower, um a few days ago, I talked about that and we have got some new initiatives. Starting from late last year, we found that many Hong Kong students are in fact uh pursuing. Uh further studies on the mainland. Last year, the uh border was not yet open. And that created difficulties for our recruitment. So we are trying to carry out recruitment exercises. Targeting at Hong Kong students studying on the mainland uh to join our police force. Finally, C P, I have my round, two simple questions. Just now, you talked about telephone uh deception. You said that you have had a lot of cooperation with the uh service providers. Uh so like stopping the plus eight five two calls and ticking down the hyperlinks that are suspicious. Well, usually we get telephone calls. Uh what happens is that on the mainland, we have got short. Uh messages warning us not to take such calls and not to click the hyperlinks. In other words, the message will reach each and every person, but we haven't had such an arrangement. The police in Hong Kong haven't sort of sent out such messages. So can we do the same via S M S or other uh means? In this way, the message can reach um every citizen directly. There's also another question for winding serious assaults and criminal damage cases. We saw the uh involvement of non-ethnic Chinese residents. C P, have you made such an observation? Uh is it sort of carried out by syndicates or whether such N E Cs were sort of controlled by a syndicate? Two questions. The first was about deception and its prevention. Indeed, we have done what you suggested. Last June, we liaised with the mobile uh service uh providers. They joined us in the anti-deception work. Through their platforms, we've been issuing anti-deception messages to our citizens. So indeed, we have done that. And I take this opportunity to uh say the following. Even for landlord service providers, we are also talking to them and I can share with you certain new initiatives. For calls from outside of Hong Kong that carry a high level of risk. When such calls come in, we will add a uh alert message. Say for example, we say that this is from outside of Hong Kong, beware. To see whether it is a deception call. So the receiver will think before getting the call or answering the call. It has been proved to be rather effective and a few service providers also agree that it will work. And then from time to time, we may get bogus S M S. Again, we are talking to the service providers to see whether we can have register for senders of S M S. So that. Bonafide S M S senders um will get a sort of accreditation. Or when you get a message from them, uh you have that sort of verification. We've been talking to the major service providers like um P C C W and I Cable, et cetera. Just early this month, we had a working group meeting. And we asked the fixed line service providers to help us to tackle online deception cases and help us to um. Stop the hyperlinks that are suspected to be involved in online deception. So for mobile service operators and for the fixed line uh network operators. Uh we're working with them and Ofca is also uh our partner. We are trying to find new ways to be more effective in tackling deception. Just now, if you talk about the involvement of N E Cs in crime. As to whether they did so on their own initiative, whether they had already joined certain triad societies. In fact, both are true. Of course, sometimes we may be talking about uh shop theft. Or miscellaneous theft cases, and then they would have been committed by them on their own initiatives. While others are involved in serious assault cases and we can tell that probably they are. Uh related to certain triad societies. Before I give you the floor to have a summary. Mister Lamson Keen pressed the button to speak, so I'll give him uh the chance to speak. I want to talk about the um traffic offense um tax penalty tickets. I think those who park illegally are aware of uh when the policeman will come. So they will just avoid uh the policeman as they know when you are coming. And then they will just come back after you have left. So I just wonder if you are giving a daily quota to your traffic wardens or your traffic policemen. So that they have to meet the quota. And then uh we have got uh deception cases um. Sort of uh offering jobs to um uh job seekers. Do you still have this kind of employment? Mister Ma. Thank you, Mister Look, for your questions. First of all. Traffic offenses. Well, to be frank with you, no, no, we don't have a quota. As to whether we will go at a regular uh sort of uh time to book the the vehicles. Well, sometimes it is because in certain areas, it is always the same period of time in the day that you see a more serious problem of illegal parking. And then we will go at that time to step up our enforcement. At the same time, I can tell you that. Complaints against illegal parking have been increasing all the time. Every day, we have to deal with many complaints against illegal parking. For each and every police district, I have got a dedicated team to deal with such complaints. And they are working around the clock. In particular, during the peak hours, they have to carry out specific law enforcement work. And this one for each and every police uh district, we have a district traffic enforcement team to deal with such complaints. Um exclusively. For employment deception cases. Altogether, forty six victims told us that they were given overseas job offers as well as romance scams. Thirty five of them have already returned to Hong Kong out of forty six victims. And then seven have been released, but then they are not yet back in Hong Kong. Maybe they are elsewhere, but they haven't returned to Hong Kong. So far, four have yet to be released, two in Cambodia, two in um Myanmar. Uh for the four of them, we are sort of in liaison with their family members. So far, we know that they are still safe. Thank you, C P. We still have a bit of time left. Would you like to have a sort of uh conclusion? Thank you, Chair. Before I conclude my briefing, uh I would like to talk about four operational priorities. First of all, we would like to uphold national security. We want to have a whole community approach in fighting terrorism. Last year, law and order was good, but there were still a handful of people who were inciting others online to engage in unlawful acts. Uh we have to prevent um and terrorist acts going underground. We will continue with our intelligence work and we will actively work through different platforms and activities. To make sure that people will have the awareness of spot and report. And there should be a whole community approach in fighting against terrorism. And then for property order and property uh safety, uh we will uh know that we are back to normal after the pandemic. The police will make sure that for property events that will be resumed will be carried out safely and orderly. And again, we will focus on law and order issues that are close to the heart of the community. Say, for example, liaising with regulators, sectors and other departments. And come up with a multi-front approach in tackling uh deception cases which are of great concern to you. And thirdly, we will continue with our uh enhancement of youth work. Police is uh aware of that. Again, with an interdisciplinary approach and we have been deploying soft skills to enhance um the. Uh law-abiding awareness of the young people and there will be more platforms for the young to realize their potential. And fourthly, we would like to enhance our community relations. Other than the traditional channels, we are also making use of the digital channels. To maintain a close and effective liaison with our community. We will also make use of technology and innovation to enhance our efficiency and enhance our transparency. And we'll be joining hands with all sectors of the community in carrying out our work and we will enhance the public trust and and support in in us. All in all, law and order in Hong Kong is sort of uh at a very stable uh sort of a stage. And compared with other major cities, we have a relatively low crime rate. Deception cases have been increasing. But when we talk about traditional ones like robbery and burglaries, they have recorded a significant decrease. This year will continue to liaise more with the community. The police and the citizens should join hands to prevent crime and fight crime. We'll all be staying steadfast in our um uh posts and do a good job. Thank you. Thank you, C P. We move on to the second item on the agenda. Redevelopment of Hong Kong Correctional Services Academy Multi-Purpose Genetium at forty seven Tong Tao Wan Road Stanley. This is a a financial proposal. So non-panel members have been invited to join us. If you have direct or indirect pecuniary interest on this matter, then in accordance with Rule eighty three A of the rules of procedure. You have to disclose the nature of your interest before you speak. Public officers have joined us, so I will sort of introduce them to you. Joining us, we have Mister Michael Chek, Under Secretary for Security from the Correctional Services Department. We have Mister Um Chu Kong, Deputy Commissioner. We have Mister Bronut Lau. Um the principal of the Hong Kong Correctional Services Academy of the C S D, as well as other public officers. Members, if you would like to speak, please press the request to speak button. We have until four thirty for this item. So far, only Doctor Johnny Ng has indicated his wish to speak. In a moment, I have to put this question to you, that is whether you would agree to refer this matter to the P W S C. Um Mister Chek, if you're ready, please start your briefing. Members are uh are fully aware of your sort of um. Uh proposals. We are here to talk about the redevelopment of the Hong Kong Correctional Services Academy at Tong Tao Wan Road. Established in nineteen fifty eight, the Hong Kong Correctional Services Academy has been providing professional training for new recruits and serving officers of the C S D. It has had a history of a few decades and we've got an increase of manpower. Facilities are inadequate and they have become delectitated. And we are developing smart training and would like to incorporate innovation technology into our training. We need um advanced and virtual reality training venues so as to enhance members' awareness of our scenario training. And they can be more equipped and better equipped to deal with emergency cases. Limited by the uh space available, we're not able to carry out large-scale talks and activities. And so we are not effective in community education activities. And since twenty eighteen, for um the. for the uh Assistant Officer Two, we have year-round recruitment. And that has created difficulties in making arrangements for the venues. Now, the academy uh had its gymnasium built in the nineteen sixties. We are going to have an institute redevelopment. It will become a new multipurpose complex. So that we'll have an indoor sports hall and physical conditioning room, a two-hundred-and-fifty-seat auditorium and indoor mini firing range, a VR training room and then other facilities. Uh for such facilities, this will provide sufficient training facilities for our recruits and it can also help the department in its long-term development as well as meeting our needs for community education. Having consulted you, we will follow the usual procedures to go to the Public Works Subcommittee for deliberation and seek funding approval from the Finance Committee. Our project will commence upon obtaining funding approval from the FC for target completion in around three and a half years. I'll appeal to members to support the proposal and we are happy to take questions from you.
Dr. Johnny Ng and then Mr. Edmund Wong, four minutes, question and answer. Doctor Ng, please. Thank you. In paragraph nine of the paper, it is mentioned that an indoor mini firing range will be included. But does it provide a simulated firing training? If yes, what kind of training content will be included? Is it possible for you to provide VR training? As for paragraph six, you have mentioned community education programs. Can you let us know how this redevelopment will help in the implementation of these youth education programs? Before the utilization of the mini firing range, I'll ask my colleague to let you know. For the indoor mini firing range, it is for the training purposes, including live uh rounds. So it will simulate our nighttime escort process when team members encounter fatal ambush or other threats. We can train our colleagues in handling the situation. It can train our team members' capability in handling emergency and the ability to deploy the correct level of force. As for community education programs, we have first started our program in two thousand and eight. We would like to broaden our youngsters' horizon. And we have started with the Rehabilitation Pioneer Project, RPP. We now have fourteen different community education programs. Before the pandemic, uh thirty-eight thousand participants joined our uh relevant community programs. Other than the RPP, we need to provide venue to support other youth education programs, including events that promote national identity, uh Live Planning Activities Project J and other activities jointly uh done with the EDB. Therefore, the redevelopment will certainly help with our youth education programs. Any follow-up? No, thank you. Next, Mr. Edmund Wong. Well, I support the redevelopment project because I believe that more uh technology can be infused. But I have a few questions. Well, there are more facilities to be built, but the cost breakdown is not provided. So I would like to know for the VR training room, how large is the room and what is the approximate cost? For there are some, there are maximum security facilities and other facilities as well. So how will it simulate the situation? As for the comprehensive building to the north of it, there is a firing range that is rather large. So what is the purpose of having another firing range in the new facility? Also, an armory is included. So will the armory be shared with the north range? Second, on noise generated during construction. Well, it is near residential area and there is a staff quarter nearby. I understand that CSD operates around the clock. So during the construction of Ledge Code, the construction work was mainly conducted at night. But for CSD, well, staff members need their rest during the nighttime. So will the construction work affect their rest? If yes, I'm sure you have considered this already. What are the mitigation measures? Regarding the firing range, uh I will invite colleagues from DCSD to reply. As for the mitigation measures, uh I will invite colleagues from ASD. Thank you. Deputy Commissioner Ng, please. Thank you for your question. In the proposed uh multipurpose complex, there is a new firing range. Well, the main difference with the existing firing range is that, well, the original firing range is of the traditional design. VR technology is not incorporated. So in the new mini firing range, especially for the regional response teams, they will be trained in various scenarios. This is the main purpose of this firing range. As for the relevant costs, we need to procure relevant VR equipment and other facilities and it is included in the fund fin uh funding application here. As for the armory, based on actual needs, for the multipurpose complex, the existing armory will be moved to the new multipurpose complex. Mr. Edward Wong, Project Director from ASD. Regarding VR training room, we have three rooms there. And the size will be about a hundred square meter. I don't have the breakdown of the cost on hand. When we submit our proposal to the PWSC, we will provide the detailed breakdown. Perhaps I can provide you with the numbers later. Though perhaps you can submit the relevant details uh to the PWSC. As for noise, well, we have conducted an environmental impact assessment and no mitigation measures are required. But in our contract, they are required to provide noise barrier, especially during piling works, to prevent uh noises. Next, Mr. Leitong Qu. I speak in support of this redevelopment plan. In the past, other than their own duties, the CSD has contributed a lot to our society. Well, just then you have told us about the youth education works that the CSD has done. Well, all these take space. Especially when you can take them to a prison nearby so that young people can get the experience of entering a prison. This can enhance their law-abiding awareness. So now you will demolish the original facility and redevelop a complex institute. Well, it takes three and a half years to go through the Finance Committee. It is not a short period of time. So after the demolition of the existing gymnasium, before the new complex is completed, how are you going to ensure that the existing work and training efforts can be maintained? I would like to know about this. Second, I understand that the academy has a rather long history. It has been in service longer than academies of other discipline services. So what other improvements can you make to the academy so that it can catch up with modern needs? So that new recruits can be trained effectively? Two questions from me. Thank you. Under Secretary, or Deputy Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Le for your support. For during construction, the effects on our training. During the construction, firstly, we can't use the gymnasium. So our backup plan is to conduct training that is originally conducted in the gymnasium. Let's say group training or physical training. We will move to another appropriate venue, perhaps uh on the foot drill ground or another venue in Block A, next to Block A. And we will move to Mahang Prison in Stanley. It is currently vacant and the community programs can be conducted there and training can also be conducted there. We hope to minimize the impact that the construction will have on our training. As for the facilities, yes, Mr. Le, you are right. We want to uh bring our facilities up to date. So we have modified existing facilities. We want to introduce technology into our facilities. Let's say VR so that our colleagues can be better equipped for our future operational needs. And for some of our staff members, they haven't actually worked in a real prison setting. So we would like to be able to provide them with a simulated environment so that they can uh get a feel of what it is like inside a prison. Well, you have implemented a pilot scheme on smart prison. It has been quite good. Does it have to be included or incorporated with the academy? So that recruits don't have to actually be in that prison. Rather, they can experience it in the academy. Well, you are right. With the implementation of smart prison in Thai-Tam Correctional Institute Institution, we have implemented a new management system and the relevant training has been provided in the academy. This change has been revolutionary. In the past, uh we do roll call manually and the system can do it automatically now. And the relevant facilities will be provided to our recruits so that they can learn how to use the system before they leave the academy. Well, I have a simple question. You are asking for some four hundred million. They are mainly for the redevelopment of the complex. Just that members have asked question regarding the VR training room. So does the cost of the introduction of new technology included in the four hundred million dollars? But the estimated cost has already included these costs for technology. Well, but three years from now, will we be able to procure more advanced uh technological equipment? That remains to be seen, but we have reserved forty million dollars as contingency. Well, there are no other questions. So do we uh agree to submit this proposal to the PWSC for consideration? Item three, AOB. We don't have any. Meeting adjourned.